All the order, the Indiana Township Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for September eleventh, twenty twenty four. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the item number two, approval of the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors meeting. Any comments?
Yeah, in the roll call, it doesn't have supervisor name. He was in attendance.
Yes.
Well, it was she was copying from the.
From another.
The from, yeah, the last one.
I did. I didn't put you back in.
Alright. You can throw him in there if you want.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve with amended changes?
Second.
Have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Hedberg, to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And next item is Citizens Forum for Agenda Items Only, and the Cooper Siegel Library had made a request to speak, and I'm gonna call for them first.
Hey, I'm Jill Laffano, Executive Director of the Persepolis Community Library. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you this evening, just to give you kind of an update of all the activity that's been taking place at both of our locations. And also, thank you once again for your ongoing financial support. I greatly appreciate that. So, for twenty twenty three, we had, we had seen increased usage across the board. Combined with the two locations, we had a hundred and five thousand seven hundred visitors, which is a twenty-three percent increase over twenty twenty two. We had three hundred forty thousand five hundred items borrowed. Nearly fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty people attended our programs, which was a twenty-four percent increase over twenty twenty two. We conducted a hundred and eighty-seven visits to senior living facilities in our service area, so we do go to those facilities in every municipality that we serve, and that was an increase of thirty-three percent in those visits. And over fifty-nine thousand four hundred thirty people used our computers and Wi-Fi, which is a forty-three percent increase. So, we're seeing that is still definitely in need within our communities. We, so, added some access to resources outside the library in twenty twenty three. Specifically, we introduced our patrons to Canopy, which is spelled K-A-N-O-T-Y. That's an online streaming service that patrons can get access to movies, TV series, documentaries, kids' shows, and also the great courses. And that is completely free with your library card, and it's only for our residents. So, we're making sure that those people get that service. We also expanded our online access to the New York Times. We were getting a basic subscription to that and providing that to our patrons. But last year, we added the games, Wirecutter, Cooking, and Athletics sections as well, so you pretty much can get the full aspect of that publication, again, for free with your library card. As far as Indiana residents' usage in twenty twenty three, at this point, or at that point, forty-two percent of your residents did have a library card, and they borrowed or downloaded nearly forty-four thousand items. And we had over nine hundred and sixty people attend our library programs, which is actually a fifty-eight percent increase over twenty twenty two. So, we're seeing more and more people come to our programs as well, which is fantastic. We did launch our two and a half million dollar capital campaign for Cooper Siegel in January of this year, and we've raised over one point four million so far. We will apply for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar Keystone Grant this fall. If we are awarded that grant, we will be ready to start our renovation on our lower level in the spring of twenty twenty five. That renovation will basically, it's going to finish. There's about six thousand square feet on our lower level that's completely unfinished at this point. So, this campaign will be used to finish that space, as well as establish a fund for future capital expenses. The renovation will double the current number of programming and meeting spaces that we currently have, and include a new dedicated Makerspace and soundproof some of the existing study rooms that we already have. That's all I have for this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Just a question, number two point one, well, one point four, open seven. What was the, what was the goal? What was the reason why?
For the capital campaign?
Yeah.
So, for, from the community, we are hoping to raise one point seven five.
Okay.
So, I've been following you guys for a while, so I hopefully don't have too many questions, because I kind of ask them as I go. But with the, the increase that you, that you folks are seeing, are you noticing an increase in any, like, particular age groups? Or does it seem like it's pretty even across the municipalities people? Because, I mean, I spent a lot of time at the library as a mom, and so, I mean, I'm very much like in that wheelhouse and starting to now really understand a lot of the other programs that you guys offer, but I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I'd say our largest, we have two groups of people, I'd say, are our largest users, and it is the young families, for sure, with the younger kids. Our storytimes in particular, I don't know if any of you have been to the library, but we used to have a little storytime room as part of the children's area upstairs. And it has, those storytimes have grown so much that we now have to use the large program space downstairs, and we actually even more recently had to split one of those storytimes into two storytimes. So, we have one at ten and then another one at eleven. So, it's, it gets, yeah, it just keeps growing and growing, which is fantastic. The other group, I would say, is our older population. We've heard from many of them. Sandy Kuttas, she's one of our board members and an Indiana resident. But we have found that more and more people, you know, as they retire, they're starting to come to the library, come to our programs. I, I lead one of the evening book discussion groups, and I get a new member almost every month, and it's someone who's just moved into the area or just retired, and they're looking, you know, to reach out and try new things, meet new people. And so, I would say those are the two groups that do that as well.
I spoke to, I came and toured the facility. It was when you had an event to invite the municipal leaders, and the person who gave me a tour said that the Makerspace and the meeting spaces downstairs, you know, would be open and a great way for kids, especially in the school district, to continue education on, like, robotics and programming and things that would be there. Will these spaces also be available to local homeschool groups and families who do, that are here but not in the school district?
Yes. Okay, yeah, absolutely. So, we, we hope to hire someone specifically for that Makerspace, who will be fully trained on all of the equipment, the software, you know, all, design all the programming and educational programs around those things in that space. So, they will, we will have regular programming, and certainly, we will definitely make sure that our homeschool population is well aware of that resource for them as well.
Yeah. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Evening, Ms. Brian Merritt, five twelve Sander Lane. I just wanted to, I submitted, I recently found out there's a vacancy on the Planning Commission. I submitted a letter of interest in my resume to Mr. Anderson. And all I wanted to say is, you know, I think my experience could, could help the township quite a bit. But Mr. Anderson did call me and informed me of the process, so really not here to comment on that. I'm just here to, you know, comment and express my desire to support and serve the community if I could. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you, okay, thanks. Nettie Owens, one and nine, Gergo Drive. I wanted to comment on the agenda item that is the Planning Commission appointment, MP under new business. So, the Planning Commission announced that there was an opening on, on the, that had come available in District Two. And, I'm sorry, is there something? Do I just?
No. So, keeping the, the five minute timer, Dan's keeping his thing there.
Okay, I was confused, because I'm not sure what's going on there. So anyways, the, the Planning Commission announced that there was an opening for District Two. And, and that was kind of the end of it. And then, some, I let folks in my, in my neighborhood and district know that there was an opening. A number of people put in an application, and then we saw the agenda item come out, that only one person was going to be considered tonight. And I, I reached out to, to call Mayor Khan about that and had some questions about that, which got me looking back at the process here for appointing people to various commissions and committees. And so, I went back to December, January, and February, where we had a lot of discussion on the process of filling vacancies. And so, I'd like to commend you that we at least knew about the opening at the Planning Commission, so that is definitely a move into the right direction. Since last time this came up, no openings were announced at all. But I'd like to ask that we please, please announce these, these openings via the website. We now have the capability to do that. We have the announcements that go out about, for instance, the Halloween, the Fall Festival that the police are providing in October, road closures and openings, applications for benefits and other things. And it seems rather odd that we have announcements for all of these other things, but we can't seem to possibly announce that there are openings and vacancies on our committees. It seems like a really simple process, probably takes ten minutes to put that announcement out, and that there are people who are interested in, in participating. My understanding is that there are four applicants that have put in their information for this position, so I'm asking that you please consider the four applicants, including Brian Merritt, who's here, and has submitted his information, along with Michael, who's here, and I'm glad to see, you know, him as well. I don't know who the other two applicants were, so I can't name those, but my understanding is that there were four. This is unusual. You guys shared previously that almost no one applies. They usually don't have letters of interest sitting in the hopper. And so, the fact that we have four, it seems like we should consider all of them if we have that much interest, along with, again, sharing the process out of what it takes to be on, be on one of these committees or that there is an opening. Crowley, way back in February, said that there is no blackout period for people applying. I'm quoting him from, from that February meeting, which means that there should be no deadline. Or if there is a deadline, that should be expressed. And when I spoke to Mayor Khan the other day on the phone, he said that the other candidates hadn't met the deadline for applying, and that's why they weren't considered. But my understanding is, no, no deadline was communicated, so it's hard to meet a deadline that nobody knows about. Additionally, Mayor Khan, back in February, read the Township Section two six eight oh two, which said each member of the Township Planning Commission shall be appointed by the manager with the advice and consent of the Board of Supervisors. But from repeatedly listening to the December, January, and February Board of Supervisors meetings where this was discussed at length, we actually seem to have the opposite process going on, where the mayor is, or I'm sorry, the manager is gathering all of the information and directing the Board of Supervisors on this process, instead of the Board of Supervisors having information and directing the managers. So, it seems to me like we need to flip that around. That is all that's in there from my understanding about what is required legally. Our solicitor, Mr. Furman, shared that we can do anything we want in this process, which means we can define the process as benefits our community. And repeatedly, people in our community have said, we would like to know when there are vacancies. We would like to be, have the information so that we can apply when those come up. Given that the Planning Commission has a term of four years, and the zoning hearing board has a term of three years, it's unlikely that somebody is going to think that if a position has just been filled, that there would suddenly be an opening in that same spot. So, they're not inclined to sit, to send in their letter of intent. And yet, we've had, if I can, if I'm counting correctly, I think five openings come up since, since the beginning of the year. So, please, please, I would ask that you consider the applicants that have, what their information.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Nettie.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Beth Bookmeyer. I live at one ten Deer Run Lane in Monowoods. Some of this might be.
Excuse me, what was the address?
One ten Deer Run Lane. Deer, like the animal.
Like with, yeah.
For the.
Yep. You know, I just, some of this is gonna echo Nettie's comments, so I apologize for being repetitive. But, you know, one thing I'll say for me personally is that with what's been happening in the township lately with MPF management's proposal to rezone the property near my neighborhood, I've been attending pretty consistently Planning Commission meetings, Board of Supervisor, Supervisor meetings for the past few months. And I, in that process, have come to learn of the importance and the role of the Planning Commission, and the importance to all of you for their counsel, for their advice, to help you all make decisions. So, that said, I was a little alarmed to, to hear that a recommendation for an appointment was being made already, having also just learned of a vacancy and having learned of other candidates who are interested. I have nothing against Michael Calandra. I know he's a former neighbor. I know he's been very successful in business that happens to also have interest in oil and gas. But I also know one of the other candidates, who's a neighbor, who has applied for this and stated his interest, and he is very qualified. I had to kind of force him to give me his resume, but I know he has educational background in civil and environmental engineering, with an emphasis on water resources. He has worked for both private and public entities to help them achieve their goals and need development needs. Much of his career was spent in the design, committing, and construction of land development projects for clients spanning sectors including residential, commercial, industrial, transportation, energy, oil, and gas, as well as the federal government's Department of Defense. More recently, he's been supporting municipalities in achieving their infrastructure goals. He's represented the interests of both public, public and private entities alike before governing bodies, environmental committing agencies, investors, and the general public. He seems very qualified and worthy of consideration. So, you know, I would minimally hope that if a recommendation is being made for an appointment, that this candidate, Brian Merritt, is considered, not just by the Township manager, but also that all of you have a chance to consider him, as well as the other two candidates not even mentioned. So, I guess that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have anything to say? Nobody come to the mic. We'll move on to development proposals.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. This evening, the only development proposal we have in the agenda for this evening is the Sharp Plan of Lots and Agreed. Are you going to give the board a quick overview of what, what the simple subdivisions are?
Sure, sure.
Or if you'd like, if you'd like to do that too?
Ah, okay, that's fine.
Sure.
Matthew Schmidt from Hampton Technical Associates. I'm here tonight just representing the Sharp Plan of Lots. It's a simple lot line revision. The Curdys and the Sharps are basically facilitating the swap of approximately point one five acres. It's on Indian, it's at the end of Indian Drive. And, but, there's houses on both pieces of property. The plan complies with the local ordinances. And, I mean, that's really all I have to add. It's a pretty simple project, lot line revision. There's not much going on. They're just swapping, like I said, point one five acres.
And Mayor, we did have an opportunity to look at this simple subdivision, and as a leader, there's a letter in your packet, it's kind of looking like plans, too. Of my letter dated August twenty second, there was only some minor items relative to the plan. Basically, what's happening here is there's a larger adjoining track that's being small, that's being subdivided off and added to the joint moment. So, based on the foregoing, we would recommend approval of the Sharp simple subdivision, contingent upon the engineer's letter dated August twenty second, you guys.
Can I make the recommendation? Seconded? We have a motion and a second. A motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Newman, to approve the Sharp Plan of Lots, Lot Revision Order. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to pay bills?
Do. I'll make that motion. Okay.
Seconded? Supervisor Newman made a motion to pay the bills, seconded by Supervisor Jorgensen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The old business. Don't appear to have any.
We have.
Thank you. Start with reports, then the volunteer fire companies.
Yeah. Forestville has a new engine that's on order. Hopefully, received soon, the replacement engine. It's almost twenty years old. It's gonna be hard to keep up, replace them every twenty years. They keep getting more and more expensive.
How many does this one?
Eight hundred thousand dollars for an engine that doesn't have any hose or water.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not cheap, maintained, hard to keep, or get replaced. Any others?
That's all that we have.
Okay, thank you very much. Emergency Medical Services?
You have those report.
We have reports from both.
We have the reports.
Okay. Okay. Chief Police?
Yeah. Each member was given a copy of a monthly report. Also, additional to that, I did place a resignation letter for one of the officers who is gonna be moving. And we are currently accepting full-time applications, and we look at next month and October to replace two officers in the department designing the county report.
So, that down three, then?
We're gonna be down two.
Two, okay.
Right now.
How's the four, though? Are you getting applicants?
We're, we're getting a few. We have, like, six or seven apps in right now. But, um, within a month, they're gonna be all turned in, and then we're gonna be in the air views in, in October.
Uh, do you feel that maybe it would be beneficial to open up the tier on some of these guys as far as, like, negotiations go, to retain more officers? So, we don't necessarily have to compete with other municipalities as far as.
I wouldn't recommend doing that or having that discussion.
You guys need to go first.
In terms of, you know, for contracts and things, public officer labor negotiations are executive session.
Okay. May we take an executive session and talk about that at some point, so we're not, you know, losing any more officers?
Yeah, Tim, I don't think that's the reason. I mean, if you look and you read the letter, you know, one is moving back some. I mean, there's, there's reasons on that, so.
Rather, rather than.
For by the final.
Rather than, rather than discussing the contract, then.
Yeah.
I think if someone wants to call for an executive session, we can have them do whatever they like on that. I think that, that talks about the most people.
Okay, great. Then, if, to discuss contracts and police retention, I'd like to call for an executive session briefly after this meeting.
Next Code Enforcement Officer. Mr. Curdie is not with us this evening, but we have his report.
He's in training.
Yeah, Public Works.
And he's also a engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in, in keeping with the Memorial Day celebration, my engineer's report this evening is in blue, mainly because I don't like red. But anyways, here we go. So, on the development proposals, I've now received the additional information we requested for the Saxonburg Boulevard School Grading Plan. And based on that, so what happened there, just for what happened though, is there was the Saxonburg Borough Site Plan that was submitted, which was the building that's now occupied. There was some additional fill that was put on the site that was not part of the original approval. So, the Code Enforcement Officer and myself attended a meeting with the developer, and we requested that they put in a grading plan so that it would receive a full scrutiny at the township. They've now done that. They provide this with additional plan. The Sharp subdivision, we've already, you've already acted upon. The, at the next, the next Planning Commission meeting on the agenda will be the Saxonburg Boulevard School subdivision plan. And what they're doing on that particular piece of property is to subdivide off the lower track that will be accessed to Kent Drive. The only concern that I have, a little cash out, is that where they wanna put the house is right at the tail end of the emergency spillway for the detention facility. So, if for some reason that detention facility were to malfunction, I think they'd get a basement full, and we'll just have to figure out how we're gonna handle that. They're gonna need to. In addition, we had an advisory meeting yesterday, the Code Enforcement Officer and myself. And for the Frederick, it's actually the Frederick Farms PRD has now come in. It is a twenty-two acre piece of property. If everybody knows where the Manor of Hartwood is, with the, the power lines that go right up through there, it's right along the power lines there. And what they're gonna be doing is subdividing that piece of property, the twenty-two acres, through, through the PRD process into thirty-nine lots off of Saxonburg Boulevard. On the development activity, the courtyard at Hidden Falls, they're still putting in sidewalks. The plan is ninety-eight percent build out, so this is a, an example of just how quickly these developments are, are building out. Historically, any plan that was developed in Indiana Township took anywhere from five to ten years to build out. So, the housing market, I guess, is, is going along pretty well here. The, the developer has requested for us to start going through the final management process, although he hasn't formally given us a request. Therefore, we've got a thirty-day period for me to do that. It's not treatment, so that's what that says. On the Hartwood Meadows PRD plan, the developer is proceeding with the construction of the third detention facility. And in addition, they've extended their performance line of four, five hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred dollars until December of two thousand twenty-five, giving them enough time to build out that particular plan. Right now, it's about two percent build out. It could go up to the plan, and Chris could probably tell me more, but is it, is it two houses that are up at this point?
Uh, no. I think they're up to, they have foundations and probably over a dozen.
A dozen?
And framing some for, I don't know, five or six.
So, it's starting to move right along. On the Foxwood Trails PRD that was, as well as the Blue Run Road PRDs that were passed by the township many years ago, both of those are basically stopped. There are no further action on those. On the Indiana Trails, the developer has now purchased the property off of the, the original homeowner. They've now demolished the, the two houses that were on that property. We're currently updating our tree count for the property. The developer has secured the HOP to access onto the, the state roadway. The sewage facilities, man, of modules have now been adopted by the township at the last meeting. They've now been submitted to D E P for their review. And I would, I would imagine that the developer pretty soon is gonna be asking for the developers' agreement to prepare my solicitor, so we can get that one. But of course, as, as we all know, that that particular plan is still in litigation, and we'll see. Um, but of course, as, as we all know, that that particular plan is still in litigation and we'll see what he does at this point. On the old Saxonburg School Site Plan, again, as I.
Just for clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this might be something for Herb as well, they can work, they can gray nearly just being still, all it's in litigation, correct? Yeah, they can.
There's, there's no stay on anything they're doing.
Okay.
So it's, they're proceeding at their own risk, of course, right, you know, probably start back to square one, but they're on their, they're at their own risk, we're gonna proceed.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So I think in that particular, as, as Herb mentioned, is that they could ask for the developer's agreement, they could go ahead with the construction of it. But as Herb mentioned, is that for some reason the, the litigation goes a different way or whatever, uh, you have a partially developed plan there, but they're not. So on the, um, the Harmony at Hart's Run, uh, Jeff is putting together a letter on some items that he wants to discuss with the developer there.
Did they include the parking?
Yes.
Cause that's.
Precisely the parking.
They, they, they've taken it to a new level.
So on Ottawa Hills, I haven't done anything more than that. The MS four annual report, uh, the PRP has been advertised, you'll see later on the agenda, under new business, a resolution that needs to be passed so that we can submit that by the deadline, which is, I believe, the thirtieth of this month. Uh, and as I've mentioned numerous times before, as a result of the, um, other detention basins and things, uh, you've kind of skirted the issue of, of going ahead with this five hundred thousand dollar budget. On the township, uh, zoning ordinance update, the planning commission is getting pretty close to making this middle to the supervisors, uh, based on the request from the supervisors. On the two thousand twenty-four paving project, of course, you can see that all the paving is done at this particular point, uh, there is some miscellaneous items such as ceiling. And I think everybody who's sitting in the audience today is, the one thing that's missing, somebody help me. There you go, thank you. So we'll have, the lines will probably be paved in next week.
They did a great job, excellent, they did a great job. Everything that I looked at, they did.
Thank you, I, I think it was, uh, worked really well myself. So later on, there'll be some, uh, action from the board to approve estimate number one, and we'll be holding back some money until they do those miscellaneous items, number one being oil. On the salt shed, uh, the manager, or the superintendent, the public works superintendent, uh, who's been emailing the contractor this coming Tuesday.
Our engineer had a meeting with our public works superintendent for him to select the colors. Right.
I was gonna, I really thought I had them. Uh, anyways, the, uh, the colors that were selected by the public works superintendent match pretty much the, the public works building, which will be a white roof and a beige siding. Uh, the salt shed will have all metal exterior instead of the T eleven plywood that was on it right now. And in addition, if the board remembers, is that, uh, the addition that we decided to go with, he decided to go with. Instead of, right now, all of the concrete, uh, footing is eight foot high, the new one will be twelve foot high, plus the, uh, the roofing system on top. The reason being is, is that, I guess, the dump trucks, especially in the middle of the night when we're spreading salt, uh, has hit the roof a couple times. So this will give us a li, four feet of additional room, so that they could pretty much open their bed completely up and make them much more efficient.
What's the, um, construction time for that?
So in talking with the contractor, we're gonna have our pre-construction meeting this Tuesday, anticipates moving in by the end of the month, the shop drawings have been approved, they're going to put in the concrete foundation, uh, about the middle of October. Uh, the concrete, uh, pre-casts are being ordered.
We hope. Part filled up before snowplows.
Yes, that's the short answer.
We had, that's, yes, we, yeah, we were, okay. So Decemberish?
November, February.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of our goal this quarter. Um, the guide rail project, uh, what you're gonna hear later on as you go through the new business is that all of your projects are planned on project. And there's an area, um, up on Blue Run Road that I think needs a little bit of guidance, so, uh, with your consideration, since it's a new price job, the manager and I talked about extending that contract a little bit and using the savings that can occur to make up Indiana Township's. Um, on the township project, you'll see that later on in your agenda, uh, the township project, both, uh, the dust control project have both been completed. Uh, the township basement, leaking.
Before we got past that one, this may be something more for Larry, but unrelated to this, Saxonburg Boulevard, which the state did, you know what that was they put on the top?
I wanted to talk, the, the state did it themselves too.
Yeah.
I mean, cause I, I've never seen. We tried to get the reclaim when they did that little bit of milling, but they won't even do the reclaim even though we have a perfect spot for them.
But what was it they put on top?
It's called micro paving.
Yeah. Micro surface.
Yes.
It's not a tar, it's tarless.
It's, it, well, it doesn't have coal dog, but yes.
No.
It's a emulsified, uh, you know, emulsion, whatever, asphalt emulsion.
I've seen some kicking up on cars, is that?
Yes. It's, it's kind of like the dust control product that we put down on the dirt.
Yeah, is that gonna continue, you think, or is it going to?
I think it, you'll, you'll see that dissipate as it cools a little later.
Okay.
So here's the way that we kind of look at it. So you just bid out the two thousand twenty-four paving project. The cost to put down two inches of asphalt is ten dollars and fifty-five cents a square yard. The cost of that micro pave is about six to eight dollars a square yard. So would you rather have two inches per eleven months or about, I'm gonna say an eighth of an inch for six to eight dollars a square yard? That's the way we always kind of.
I'm interested to see how it holds up everywhere.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna hold up to the plows. And it's county road, so state, yeah, our state was good.
That is the new thing. So the, the township, uh, basement leakage investigation, um, the insurance company, uh, has asked me to take a quick peek at that, which I'll be referring to later. The next is the Brozick Community Center Roof Replacement Project, the manager has me looking at putting that out for Baywatch again as a, an insurance issue. Uh, the township official zoning map, um, I've been asked to, to take each one of the PRD areas that have been approved historically over, uh, the past ten, fifteen years. And they, they want the roads and the property managers out, so we're gonna tweet the map before it, I guess, gets out to the public. The People's Natural Gas, uh, road opens if you've been up on Richland Drive and Highview Drive as well as, uh, Old Spring, all those crossings have been done. Uh, what we're gonna require the pave, our People's Natural Gas is to basically pave about thirty feet wide, which are the patches. And, um, I'm gonna tell you, half of me is, is telling you that we're doing this to make sure that your road system is put back to as near its original condition as it can be. The other side of me is, is that, uh, we're trying to, I don't wanna say we're trying to penalize them, but trying to discourage utility company, cutting off, off your roads, especially after they're just, uh, the last one that's not on my list here is, uh, the manager and I put together the two thousand twenty-four North Coast Council of Government grant application. That application is to extend the sidewalks that we've already started, Emerald Park over to the way. That concludes my report. It's been a busy month.
Is the town hall basement leakage investigation, um, under where we paid the bills, is that where we had the larva do that?
Yes.
I, okay, I thought so.
Dan, quick question on courtyard, so the hidden vault, vault, so are you thinking maybe late October when we would take over? Cause I know we were, Dan and I were talking a little bit, and we're thinking maybe September, but if Brett's not able to start that thirty place block yet, then we'll probably have another month or so.
I'm thinking October and November.
Okay.
The, I mean, there's some, there's some issues that need to be worked out.
Yeah.
One is, uh, the road system in North, or, uh, Fox Chapel is privately owned, that needs to be worked out a little bit as to who's gonna snowplow that, and of course, the infamous fence.
Yeah, and then that part in the borough, that's a private lane, I guess, on Public Street, it's not gonna fall.
So Fox Chapel really needs to set, step to the plate here, uh, they're kind of lagging behind in such.
I'm talking, uh, you know, the issue the boroughs can have also is that it's a private lane. Yeah. Or should. I know some folks, the hen falls had a few odds and ends, they wanted to just take care of some of my head over there, check it out. Yeah. And that, that may be a matter of the contracting that's up. Yeah. Bye, thank you. Sure.
Solicitors?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd be happy to report this.
Thank you. Manager?
I have nothing to add to this topic.
Okay. Anybody here for Parks and Rec?
Thank you.
Historical.
I have nothing.
And supervisors? District one?
Nothing from District one.
District three?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have a, a few comments to make. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So at the last township meeting, serious accusations were made against me regarding a proposed zoning map, the revision presented to the board of supervisors by MPF. Without any provocation, John Newman attacked my credibility based on unfounded accusations, certainly misinformation, and I'll call it lies. I'm appalled by the crap that was thrown out at last month's township meeting. I believe the sole intent was to undermine my credibility as a supervisor of Indiana Township for a couple reasons. But mainly in order to manipulate my vote and the vote of my fellow supervisors. Our solicitor has trapped the letter, which honorates me, my name, my family name, from many conflicts of interest regarding the MPF request. At next month's township meeting, I will be back in front of you, I look forward to it, I will provide my fellow supervisors with additional factual information that demonstrates the incompetence that was expressed at last month's township meeting regarding MPF. That's all I'll say on that, Mayor, but to complete my report, I do wanna end on a very positive note. Last month's town hall, if my residents or my constituents went very, very well, I appreciate my supporters. The fact that I've been on the phone the last few meetings isn't a con, isn't a care or concern, they trust my leadership from afar or in the boardroom. And I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve, and they know where to go to get the truth, and it's appreciated. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I chime in real quick?
Sure. I love so much on.
So Darren, I'm just a little confused because I don't think anybody was accusing you of anything, I think we were asking for information about what your interests were. And really, having those interests, there's nothing wrong with that at all, I don't know why you're so worried about it, because really, all we wanted to know is, and make sure before you voted, was that there wasn't a conflict of interest. Potential conflict of interest, there's nothing wrong with that, we all, most of us here all have different investments and different interests. All we were saying is, before you make your vote, make sure that you disclose what you have, and if you don't have anything, you're fine, your name is fine and there's no, nothing wrong with it. Herb issued a letter and that's the Indiana Township statement on it, and I'm fine with that. Honestly, I just wanted to hear what your take is, you were very silent when people were discussing different deeds that were passed around, and you're right, I can't know for sure what that was. We just wanted input from you about what that was and why you were sure that there was no way at all that you could benefit from drilling going through Indiana Township. But no, we don't think there's anything in particular wrong with what you have, we just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the consequences that would happen if you voted for something that ended up benefiting you financially.
Let me just say this, just take a quick read through the notes, there were false accusations, they were lies, it's in writing, those minutes are approved.
What's a false accusation or a lie in the minutes? Point to it in the minutes.
Keep your opinion.
Where's it at? Because if you're saying that other people are lying and you can't back it up, tell me what that is.
So I, I, I think it's backed up nicely.
Then, then speak for the record, where's it at?
So a couple of things, Darren, if I could chime in here, cause I equally was.
Sure, Paul.
I was appalled by the, and there were accusations, call them what you want, but there were accusations. Um, and a little bit of research or questions before you, you lay down the possibility or the accusation of a conflict of interest, um, would have gone a long way, would have been much appreciated. There's a lot of bad information. Um, and I don't know where you guys are all getting it, but there's a lot of bad information floating out there. Number one, this was voted on in two thousand sixteen, and, uh, when we had the original fracking discussion for the Miller Well. And that was voted on and Darren voted no for. Three years later, two and a half years later, he was approached by Range, uh, along with the township and many other residents, that the, the drilling, now this, remind, this is two and a half, three years later. The drilling wasn't going underneath his property, or he gave up the milling, um, the mining rights, and he agreed to it. Darren?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, if it is a letter, you can read everything.
Yep.
If you have it already.
And, and then we come to this MPF, we come to the MPF, um, proposal. Number one, Darren's contract that people were waving around, we've got it right here, this is the contract, was with Range Resources. Range Resources has nothing to do with the, the, the zoning that we were talking about. There has been no drilling company proposed by MPF, not, no one.
They just.
Just let me finish, please. Um, number two, Darren already sold his, um, million.
Mineral rights.
Thank you very much, mineral, I had, I had a different word than it, mineral rights to Range, he, he's not gonna sell them again, he can't. His properties is being already mined for fracking, they're not gonna go underneath that and try to, so he, he's off the table.
And so, oh, nobody knew that last month, we had to hold on.
Why didn't you say that?
All we were asking for was information.
No, what I'm saying was, there were, there was, there was assumptions that were made.
You're laughing here, we can hear you now, but you didn't speak up last month.
I'm saying, there were assumptions.
Darren?
Done, there were assumptions made.
I never made any accusations against him, and this is kind of ridiculous to take this direction. I was looking out for this township to make sure we didn't approve something that could have been conflict of interest and had litigation for years, if he had the swing vote on that. So I was looking out for the finances of this township, I don't have anything.
And what you're saying.
What's my, of course, he's a winner, he's got a dog in the race, I don't.
But what you're saying, my state, is that if he had a conflict of interest, he would not have the integrity to say, I have a conflict of interest.
No, I said if you have a conflict of interest, don't vote on it. That's the law, Paul, that's something I don't know.
Absolutely, and if he would have had a contract of interest.
Why are you all worried about if he didn't have a contract, conflict of interest?
Because of the accusations.
What is that, I have a conflict of interest in coin because I own Bitcoin, and if we're trying to do a Bitcoin thing, I wouldn't vote on it, big deal. All of us have a conflict of interest, it's that we don't vote in a way that benefits us if we do, there's nothing wrong.
Let me just say this, I'll interject, that I was never worried about anything because I haven't done anything wrong and I knew that.
Why are you worried this month and not last month?
Oh, I'm not worried this month, what I'm telling you is that you falsely accused me to try to sway my vote.
Of what, of what, Darren, what were you falsely accused of?
Read the notes, Sean, you said them.
I did, and I proved them, because there's nothing that I accuse you of.
Am I allowed to speak?
No. This, this.
I'd also.
Time for open discussion.
Let's start at the end of the meeting where you have opportunities for public, there's public comment at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I'd also like to say, um, I'm just opening the letter here, um, that Darren is referring to, that we received this evening, and, um, I'll certainly read this. Um, called the, uh, Representatives for MPF along the planning stages, including at last minute. did length their agreement in hopes to be working with Range Resources. So, yeah. Right. And just like in hopes that they were going to rezone and get a special condition and, yeah.
But there was nothing contrapresent. Okay? And this was just the rezoning, and you could have had that discussion with Darren.
Well, I learned that here in the meeting. So, there was nothing for me to discuss when...
The sound towards you.
Okay.
Who brought it up, said, hey, when you get to the actual vote on fracking, we're not voting on fracking.
Well, but the contractor refused to uncouple that discussion. He was asked multiple times in front of the Board of Supervisors and in front of the Planning Commission to please keep this to zoning, and he refused and said, no. The only, the argument was the only thing this can be used for is for oil and gas. And he would not leave the conversation at zoning and was asked multiple times because it was off base and, you know, a little inappropriate. But he was the one, the gentleman who was representing the MFP Management Company. And was the tact, um, a little sharp? I would say yes, from the person who came up in the, uh, the audience. And what I'm seeing here is it looks like Erv wrote a letter just to let the people in the audience know that says the location is of the proposed gas well is not near any property owned by Mr. Crowley um, or his family. And I know that we don't have, at least I don't have the maps of where he owns, um, property or where this drilling was to occur, but that looks like that's the official statement coming from. Um, Tucker Hornsberg, yeah.
But what is, so the big picture, what is the accusation? What is the lie? What is it?
Well, let me read what's in the minutes.
Everybody's saying their accusations made.
So, let me read what's in the minutes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Newman said he saw, provided us, he saw the documents where Mr. Crowley has a financial interest in that if the wells would start flowing or start flowing, that Mr. Crowley would receive rents in rolling. There was no ambiguity there. It was would, not may or could, that he would receive. That's an accusation.
And it's a lie.
Yeah, it's an accusation.
I said it was...
And I'll be curious if anyone in this audience who laid those would have the decency to come forth and say, hey, I'm sorry.
I saw a D that had, said that he had oil interest that could.
You just approved this.
It could. It could not.
You just approved this.
Alright, you guys are playing gotcha? I mean, I was gonna go through the...
Oh, my God. That's funny, John.
You just approved it.
What was it verbatim? I mean, we can run back the tape. And then he takes the tape a bit. Our whole point was saying we don't know. Oh, we don't know. Okay, that was the whole thing. We were searching for information.
Did you ask him?
Yes, we asked him.
No, no. Outside of the public meeting.
Why would I do it outside? We can't do that at all. That's something you can't...
Yes, you can. No, it isn't.
Unless we have an executive session. No, it isn't.
Because you wanted a gotcha moment, John. That's what you wanted, and you didn't get it.
I'm looking out for the township, Darren. You're looking out for yourself.
I think we're reaching a little bit of a personal argument here, and I don't think we need to do that.
Who made it personal now? Who made it personal?
Okay, the point I'm making is I recall the word malfeasance being used and so forth when they were referring to Darren.
I never said that word.
I said...
No, it's honest.
I asked. I asked Erv if this constitutes malfeasance. That's exactly what I said. Read it back. Read the tape back. I said, does this constitute malfeasance? And Erv said, I don't know. I don't have enough information. That's it.
I didn't sit and go back to the tape, and I was saying that there was a potential for there to be a conflict of interest. I don't know how oil rights work. I didn't have all that information. We sat there, and Darren was silent, and we said, Darren, speak to this issue because we don't know. If he said, these are all dried up, I don't have this contract. If we had some sort of input, and we knew, at the end of the day, Paul, if he does have a conflict of interest, there's no problem, right? So why are we worried about it?
If there was a conflict?
I said there could be, and I said if, I use a conditional tense. I said if he has a contract that pays royalty, he should recuse us. That's not...
But the minutes reflect something different. The improvement.
Alright, if you guys wanna do something with it, go ahead.
Okay.
But if he had a, but if there is anything behind that, and that was not disclosed, and there could be some sort of financial gain, if this thing was approved, then you guys are fighting the wrong fight. You're gonna try to get me on some sort of linguistic game.
Hold on, hold on. We're not trying to get you on anything, but the point of the matter is that was turned down unanimously.
Yes.
So, uh, we're talking about...
It wasn't unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous. He voted for it.
He voted for it.
Why did he vote for it?
After all the discussion, he voted against the group.
But, but, but let me just reemphasize, and Darren, you can speak back to this. Let me reemphasize.
Sure.
We were voting regardless of what the, the developer was saying. He could have had, he could have had company attached to this proposal. We were only voting on the zoning change. It had nothing to do with authorizing any...
You were just voting on advertising a hearing.
Yeah, exactly.
To consider the zoning change.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with approval for it. It's one step removed from the financial interest.
Why'd he vote for it?
Potential financial interest. I don't know.
Why'd he vote for it?
To advertise a public hearing.
Why?
Sir, you, sir, you have your time to speak. At the, at the time of public comment, your time's available. It's a public comment at the end of the...
Let's just move on. Go ahead, Darren. You want to say something?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, just want to conclude that, yes, they were false accusations. They were made up. They wanted to sway votes, and that was the intent. And certainly destroy my credibility as a twenty plus year supervisor, and that's just wrong. I, I, John, I don't know what your intent was to do that to me in a, in a public meeting. If, if you, if you truly care about the township like you just said you did, like I do, and I proved it in super good, you would have had a conversation with me rather than getting a little tyranny of this minority to come at me in those minutes, prove it. And that's all I'll say on the matter, Mayor, to thank you for the opportunity to let me clear the air.
I'm sorry you took it personally, Darren. I was literally only trying to protect the interests of my taxpayers and the interest, financial interest and litigation risk of the township. And all of it was in the conditional sense of if there's a problem, don't go on. And if there wasn't, there wasn't.
Okay, okay.
We just have to agree.
We're seeing things we've said before, and we got, we're, time just, you know, running by. We're all saying the same thing over and over again, so let's just conclude this conversation and move on.
Agreed.
And that means I get to report on District Two, and their only comment I have is that the parking area here at the township is beautiful. It's in my area, so I like that. And it, uh, it was done very professionally. I looked at it while it was being done and after it was done, and it's a, it's a super job. The roads in at least District Two seem to be, have been completed by, um, the county and by the contractors as far as putting down the gravel and cleaning it up and all that stuff. They cleaned up rather nicely. I don't think that there have been any real serious problems of rocks flying around because they didn't take very long before they cleaned it up. So, uh, I, I think that was done very well, and that's all I have for the night.
Can I get John?
I'll... Yeah, Sarah?
Okay, Sarah?
Um, so District Four, very, um, happy with all of the roadwork that's been completed. Klein is very popular, as you know.
It's fast, though.
Travel on, and, um, so I know I have received some, um, feedback from that. And as we discuss the line eighteen, um, I haven't been down Klein yet, but are there lines that go all the way up to the top of Miller?
No.
Would there be? Um, when people pop up over that hill, they, uh, sometimes they'll stay on their, because it narrows, they don't stay on their side. We had a line there a few years ago, and it was very...
Yeah, we had that done in-house by Public Works, a single line.
Yeah.
That's probably the most you could do there, because you know Klein is a little still.
Yeah.
Narrow road, so it doesn't have the room to have the double.
Yes, and it's only pretty much that top of the hill where there's no sight. And people said that that seemed to have helped, and so we had a lot of positive feedback on that. Also a lot of positive feedback. Thank you guys for all your school district, um, watch. It's been very helpful, um, keeping people down. And, um, yeah, and that's all I have for District Four.
Supervisor Newman?
Hey, not District Five specific, but we do have a first responder meeting. I talked to the guys at the Fire Association about that, just letting the police know. Next Thursday, September nineteenth, eleven thirty. Dan, we use just one of the rooms here.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'll send up a follow-up, follow-up email, chief, about that to the MS guys.
You sent it on Thursday?
Yeah, just get together, just make sure everybody's on the same page on big picture first responder issues. But that's it for me.
You got a motion to accept the report?
Can we just point a order first, Erv? Um, during the reports, there was a request for a executive meeting. Just so guys we voted on or no?
No. Well, at the end of the meeting, through the mayor, I would imagine, would say we would make a motion to adjourn the meeting to executive session.
Okay.
Announcement.
One of the board questions.
Okay, good. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the report, test me there.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Harwick to approve the foregoing reports. Any further comments? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We have no correspondence, Mayor.
Okay, new business?
Uh, the first item is typical for September. It's the, um, minimum municipal obligations for both the police and municipal employees pension plans. And so you have copies of those before you, and I would ask for your approval for the twenty twenty five MMO, uh, which is based on the most recent actuarial valuations report on January twenty twenty three.
I hear a motion.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty five police municipal employees pension MMOs.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Newman to approve the twenty twenty five police and municipal employees pension MMOs. Any further conversation? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next, Mayor, uh, we have, I'm sure you've heard a lot about over the months here from the, uh, engineer, uh, the presentation of the option of the final pollution reduction plan associated with our MS four permit. Like you've covered that, please?
Be glad to. As I mentioned in my report, is that as part of the MS four program, you're required to mitigate a certain amount of sediment that's in the water or into the streams that are in the township as well as, uh, total maximum contaminant levels that are also been designated in the township. By utilizing or, uh, the, the different pension facilities that have the green cards also that have been developed by developers at their cost, I think we were able to take those credits from those different facilities and to mitigate or to achieve a sediment reduction levels as well as the maximum contaminant levels that were required by the Pennsylvania Department of Labor Protection. Uh, if we had not been able to capitalize on those credits, uh, certain stream improvements would have been required uh, throughout, uh, a little bit of creep and things of that nature, saving the township approximately five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. So fortunately, the calculation worked out in the favor of the township, and we would recommend approval of the PRP and the longest to submit.
I'll make the motion to submit the pollution reduction plan elements.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Harwick, second by Supervisor Jorgensen, excuse me, to approve the final pollution reduction plan associated with MS four permit number PA one one three six one zero one. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, the next item then is the possible approval of final estimate to Russell Standard Corporation for the Rich Hill Road, Cove Run Road, shop chip and dust control project in an amount of twenty five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So you'll see in your packet, I think the invoice, uh, the total amount now due is twenty five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars is the final payment, uh, to Russell Standard. The original, uh, bid was a hundred and one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, as a result of close monitoring the project, it came in at ninety two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and nineteen cents, saving the township eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents from the original.
I'll make a motion to approve the final estimate number two, in the amount of twenty five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars on the shop chip road. It's second.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Newman to approve, excuse me, the final estimate of the Russell, yeah, to Russell Standard Corporation for the Rich Hill Road, Cove Run Road, shop chip and dust control project in an amount of twenty five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is the possible approval of Resolution twenty twenty four oh five, which is an application for the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program, and this application is for West Gare Township and Indiana Township's new joint comprehensive plan. And so I'd ask for your approval. We're doing a joint application, uh, with West Gare, with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and that.
I'm going to motion to approve Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty four actual file.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Harwick to, excuse me, uh, approve the application for the PA Municipal Assistance Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next item, Mayor, is the possible appointment of Michael Klandra to the Planning Commission. Through December thirty one, twenty twenty seven, you do see that Michael Ruggie submitted his resignation, currently serving as chairman, has been on the Planning Commission for twelve years. I, I did speak to Mr. Klandra, uh, in advance, let's leave the packet out. Did tell him that I was recommending him for that vacancy. Uh, that was prior to you receiving your email on Monday from Mr. Merritt. I did reach out to Mr. Merritt. We did talk. I did thank him for his interest. I will keep that in mind if something else does come available, uh, in the future, but I am asking you, you for your appointment of Mr. Klandra, uh, to the Planning Commission for the remainder of an unexpired term.
Dan, did any of these other two people?
There, there weren't any others. There, there was, there was just Mr. Klandra, who I had. Uh, and then on Monday, received an email from Brian here. I'm unaware of there being four. Be happy to have those others, Mayor, if somebody's interested.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Michael, um, to the Planning Commission through December thirty first, two thousand twenty seven.
I'll second.
Of course.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen to approve the appointment of Michael Klandra to the Planning Commission through December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
So I'd just like to say, I've said it for months, I would like a more transparent process where we have more time. I would like to take another month if there are extra applications coming in. I think Michael, I am ranked, and Brian does great, and some embarrassment of riches for us to have folks like this, but because I wanted a more open process, I vote against the last three guys because I wanted everyone to have a chance to put their application in and to have a full and at least feel fair to the community. So, I vote against those three guys. They're great, you know, from what I've seen so far in the planning commissions.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is it by district? Is the Planning Commission by district?
Yes. It's by district. So this is for District Two. This is Alex's district. So, I mean, I would, I would like to table it for a month, but if need be, I'll just, well, we have been about.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table, so.
Um, and I'd like to also echo my sentiment from months prior as well. Since we do have a lot of talent in this township, the people who are willing to use their professions and their knowledge to better serve, um, our community, I think that it would be a really good idea for the board to... I think that it would be a really good idea for the board to see the folks who are interested and um we can look at their qualifications and um discuss that. I, I know that it's been a streamlined process for a very long time for Jeff and Dan to um seek out the folks who will sit on committees and advise us on that. And while I do appreciate their institutional knowledge and everything that they bring to the table when advising us on candidates, um I think it would be great for us as the elected officials to have a more hands-on approach to better represent our constituents on those matters.
Any further comments? I do have a comment, by the way. I think that uh I'm hearing what people are saying, but we are following the ordinance that's on the books that has been agreed to and voted upon in this township, which is ordinance number two sixty-eight pertaining to the planning commission. And it clearly says that the each member shall be appointed by the manager with the advice and consent of the board of supervisors. That means the manager is the one that is responsible for vetting the people that apply for a position. He is the one that is most knowledgeable of what we need, what kind of person, what background we need, because he knows the background of the other people on the board and so forth. It clearly says in this ordinance that he is the one that makes that decision. We're following the ordinance.
But Al, what Sarah and I are asking for is the time and the information to properly give advice and consent to the manager. And if we don't have that, then we're not following the ordinance, if we don't have all the information and all the potential candidates. So, and I still think we are following the ordinance even if we give it another month.
I didn't have multiple applications to put in the packet, but you all received the request from Mr. Merritt as well as he's here at the meeting. So you are considering those candidates.
Yeah, I would just like a month where something's publicly announced at the board supervisory meeting, and then the next month we vote on it, so it gets out to the community and not just by word of mouth. I think that's what looks best for the.
It's not just what I work on.
I don't know how else people would find out other than showing up to the planning.
Almost every page you look at on our website says, sure, interesting, sir.
At least a letter. But does it say that district two is open, because?
No, it never has, never has for any of them.
Yeah, that's a problem.
We, well, we haven't had a need to, fortunately, because unlike Fox Chapel, we, we did have the prospective candidates.
So is the assumption that you just apply at any point?
I have that all the time. I have, people expressed her interest in whatever their background is or interest. Uh like, one of them recently, last year, was a young lady that worked for the historical, uh or Heinz History Center. Had a background in history, and she just sent an open letter. Well, we had a vacancy on a historical commission.
I think that's helpful to know, because like we're used to the, to the.
And I had someone who sent an interest wanting to serve that was a former park ranger, perfect person for the park. And I had her letter for years before I had that vacancy. It's just been the process since nineteen seventy-four, the township approved the Government Study Commission report. And in that report, it says, if you go to page thirteen, that's what they wanted when they approved the council manager formal government for Indiana Township, we have an optional plan for a government. That's what was dictated by that nineteen seventy-four. The township re-approved that multiple ordinance since, it's been the same way long before I.
Really helpful to know.
I was in grade school, right.
Yeah, thank you.
So, just because we're not familiar with what's in the packet, did all of the board of, did, did you all get all applicants' information?
Yes.
Both of them, Brian?
No, we had one. Brian's came this week.
Well, we have.
But the meeting's now.
Right, he emailed it to everybody.
You have to understand that it has to be put on the agenda. And if it, if after the agenda is published, we can't make a change to the agenda without going through.
Well, we had changed the agenda yesterday.
But it's on, it's on the agenda, so.
It is on the agenda, no.
So I think the question was like, was that, did everybody on, or does everybody see the resume and the address? Yes, everybody has a copy of it, they have voted uh candidate's information as they're making the decision to vote on whether or not to avoid Michael Calander, it's answered, yes.
So it, so, so is it, I didn't hear a vote, I heard.
They haven't, we haven't voted yet.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second by Supervisor Crowley to approve the appointment of Michael Calander to the planning commission through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you. The next item, Mayor, is the possible approval of payment of estimate number one for the twenty twenty-four payment project. Engineer sharing.
So, in my engineer's report, the original uh bid, the low bidder, was in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Estimate number one for your approval this evening is for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand twenty-five dollars. Twenty-three dollars and five cents. Um when you take away the painting and the mobilization and things of that nature, um the project came in sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars, Australia. Sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-six, excuse me, and ninety-five cents under that, under what the contractor bid. But in addition, as a cooperative effort, uh with the township working with your authority, your creek drains, basin afforded, uh we also paid the portion of their driving. So they will be reimbursing the township in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents. So the true savings to the township will be twenty thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Under the low bidder. So it's always kind of nice to. So based on the foregoing, we would recommend payment of estimate number one to Trusco Paving in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Two hundred and sixty-five.
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Harekwek to approve payment of estimate number one for the twenty twenty-four paving project in the amount of two six five, what's that? Two hundred and, what was that exact figure? I got it written down wrong here.
It's uh two hundred and sixty-nine, two hundred and sixty-five thousand seventy-one dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, I just didn't have a zero on there. Okay, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand seventy-one and ninety cents. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All, all opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is Citizens Forum on Non-Agenda Items. Anybody have any comments they want to talk about?
Hi, um Vanessa Sumrock, one one nine Black Oak Drive. Uh I was uh hoping to, at some point in the future, reopen the discussion into setbacks. We discussed it a little bit at the last meeting. Uh there were some points brought up, uh one of them being referring it to the state. So since last meeting to this meeting, I have reached out to our state representative, Mandy Steele, and Lindsay Williams. I've spoken with both of them, um and if anyone on the board is, I'm sure they'd be willing to speak with you as well. At the state level, there's no progress currently on setbacks, and they don't anticipate any in the future. Both of them advised me to go back to our municipality and said it was within their power and right to adjust the setbacks. So they said it's not really at the state level, or not going to happen at the state level, and it should be within the municipality. So they referred me back to you guys, you referred me to them, so I'm bringing it back up today. Um Lindsay Williams did refer me to the Ligonier Ordinance, which does have a setback of seven hundred and fifty, which we had discussed was within purview of case law that has been challenged and upheld. Um and it also has a setback of one point two five miles from schools. And we found several other ordinances, about six, that had some dictation on how far it should be from schools. And given that some of the light industrial areas are very close to the elementary school and the middle school, um that would be something that I think we should also consider for the safety of our community, especially the children and the vulnerable of our community, which was much of what these ordinances had in them, were setbacks related to schools, daycare centers, um nursing home facilities, hospitals, more vulnerable populations. So Ligonier is one ordinance to look at. Uh Cecil Township, which actually recently has increased their setbacks from five hundred to twenty-five hundred. Bell Acres, Franklin Park, Ascornell, Shropshire. Um I'm happy to get any of these for you guys, I actually emailed them to Mr. Jorgensen. Um so he has copies of the Ligonier Ordinance as well as the chart you made of the other places. Um with regard to the increasing the residential distances from five hundred to six fifty or seven fifty, which uh you had mentioned there was case law that, that might give us some protections. Um while it may seem like a lot of work to open an ordinance for only two hundred and fifty feet for the citizens that live very close to proposed sites, that two hundred and fifty feet would be a huge help. So I would ask that you at least consider opening it for that distance as well as considering setbacks from schools, um and using some of these ordinances that I've sent as potential models. Because I know another point you brought up to get this on the agenda was to have specific numbers. So I'm asking that between now and the next meeting, that you consider looking at these, coming up with specific numbers and putting that on the agenda. Thank you.
May I just also say that that information is all very helpful. From what I was hearing at the last meeting and from what I've heard in the correspondence that people have sent to me, was overwhelmingly um about keeping fracking basically away from vulnerable populations, which is children and um people in medical facilities and or elderly care facilities. Um so that's really uh great to know. Um most of the people who reached out to me or seemed to have uh thoughts and opinions were not to say like, oh, you know, like, I'm just like anti-fracking, absolutely not. It was more of, let's keep it away. And um if these have been challenged and upheld, especially if it's going to keep um a safe perimeter around schools, um with just the research that has come out and been presented, I think that is worth looking into, uh because that is a much larger change to reopening this ordinance. Um I know we had said last time that the number to reopen the ordinance was just too small to go through the process. Um but I am, I am interested in visiting um a little bit of a larger change there if we can protect our most vulnerable, which is part of our job.
And, uh, thank you. I just want to also say thank you Vanessa for the work you're doing there. Um one of the things that we do have to be cognizant of though, as we look at this stuff, um every district and every municipality is different based upon the different zones. I think, Dan, we now have nine, is it eighty-five or ninety percent that were uh restricted in fracking?
About ninety percent.
Well, ninety percent of our district is right now restricted, restricted from fracking. The amount, amount of quarter we've looked at from, in this case, Dorseyville. If it wipes out too much property, then we could be accused of creating too much or restrictive. So something we have to be considerable.
Paul, would you entertain going forward in coming months, looking at the school-specific issue? Because I think that was a big concern from health and safety, but also from an economic impact of the school issue. Uh that's something that moves the needle for me. If we could, at least sometimes down the line, if we're looking at opening this up, that is an angle that I want to explore.
And, and point taken on what you said, but what I would be curious about, or the question that that brings up for me, is what, is, is there a hard number, or is it just like, well, we might be, you know, taking too much away? Um if there's a hard number, then you have a, a target that you know you have. If there's not a hard number, then it's probably going to back to case law, which is where you can ask the solicitor where we have that wiggle room. Um because I think that if there's not a hard number, then we have to decide how much risk we're willing to take with wiggle room, but you're balancing that with protecting our vulnerable populations. So, you know, I, I think that there's maybe some, some gray area that we can work within there. Um and also with the ordinances that I had emailed to you, um again, you know, those challenges, that's, your solicitor can probably tell you what's been challenged, what's been upheld and that sort of stuff too, which seems to be a lot of the deciding factor in how we move forward, so.
Exactly, and there's, there's some, you're right, it's, it's, it's a risk, it turns into a risk category because it's high risk, high reward, if you would. If you um, if you make it too restrictive, and then you could overturn in court, then they can basically do what they want, there'll be no conditions, so. Something we have to take note of.
Since you guys are really kind of studying up on this, if we were to consider, and this is just like all hypothetical, just a casual question, um to talk about changing um the space around this Dorseyville area, um would that potentially then leave just the, like residential estates primarily open for the fracking? Is that where we would land on the zoning map?
So, I haven't studied it recently, but from what I understand, we have the Miller well now, well pad already that. There's the residential states. What would be left in the light industrial based on a one point two five mile perimeter from Dorseyville or Hartwood Elementary? Or the daycare, which is in Emerald Plaza, or the nursing facility, which is up of nine-ten, um which would all be considered vulnerable populations, um all probably at least within a mile of that. Um what would be left of that light industrial I don't know. Um but I also think that the idea is that, and again, we don't have a hard number of how much percentage we need to have for them. We also don't have any responsibility to make it easy. It has to just be available. So if it doesn't fit with the parameters because they don't have mineral rights or because, you know, the, the lines are going to have to go up and around this way and that's too much, that's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to the citizens of this township.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Captain, nine over, one twenty-one, Black Oak Drive. Um I wanted to support what Vanessa is saying and um uh also wanted to ask you if you have an idea of what, like, if, um, what would help in terms of uh your knowing what the constituents want? Like a petition, like is there a certain number of, of signatures that would be helpful for you? That would give you, you know, a feeling?
So, you get out there, I mean.
There's an ordinance that you would have to ask Dan now.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, like, is there a, is there like an?
For what, for petition? Yeah, I can give them the guy, I'm just.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's if he wants to be official. You can do an unofficial one, I guess I'm an unofficial petition guy, but I mean, that still gets the information to us. But official, Dan, that means that the citizens compel it to be on the.
It was something done by the board thirty, probably ever years ago, that simply outlined, if you want to petition the township, this is how you do it. That's just a simple resolution.
Okay.
I can, I can try to find that, send it to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
What does the petition result in? Getting it on the agenda, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's how you petition the township. I don't know if it's also getting it on the agenda, depends on what it is. Can you send that to me too? Yeah, I think I did, but I will.
You, you can send it to my husband, you have my husband's email address.
I think I have an email.
Andrea's, yeah.
From the?
From the email, yeah. That would be great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, Vanessa Lynch, thirty-seven, twenty-six, Saxonburg Boulevard. Uh I wanted to start by saying thank you for voting against advertising from hearing for MPF uh management's request for reserving for fracking. I very much appreciate that vote and appreciate what it means for all of us. Um I wanted to give a little history. So um in the spring of two thousand eighteen, a large group of Indiana township families, myself included, became aware of the Miller Junior well pad being permitted to frac near Emerald. And we reached out to our neighbors to see if they were supportive of updating the twenty thirteen oil and gas ordinance to be more protective. And with nine hundred petition signers, it became abundantly clear that that was important to our residents and that protections were necessary. Uh thankfully, the board of supervisors agreed to update the oil and gas ordinance and revised it. At that time, the community had also asked that we look at this idea of setbacks. That on that issue, the board decided not to act. So today I'm here again to ask the board of supervisors to consider increasing setbacks for oil and gas. Uh the current oil and gas ordinance relies heavily on the zoning map to create protections and keeps homes at a distance of five hundred feet from well pads, but that's the minimum. But that's the minimum required by law. Indiana Township's already met its burden of fair share of land use for fracking infrastructure with the Miller Junior Well pad. There's no threat of exclusionary zoning by increasing setbacks. We have already met what we were supposed to meet. We have a well pad in our township. As others here tonight have noted, other townships and communities have successfully put in place increased setbacks without oil and gas taking them to court over those increases. Over the last six years, Indiana Township Board of Supervisors has shown their intention for our township to be more residentially focused with the approval of over 550 new homes across our region. If you, one, you can look online. There's a local Cecil Township resident who shared a video of what it looks like to be about 530 feet from a well pad and a flare. And his entire room lights up. I'm happy to show you that video. And that's really a good example of why 500 feet is just, it's not enough. And if you understood what it really meant, you might consider it different. I'd also like to bring to the Board of Supervisors' attention a recent agreement between Governor Shapiro and the oil and gas company CNX. CNX voluntarily, voluntarily agreed to increase setbacks for their well pads in PA, including a 2,500-foot setback from schools and hospitals. So, in our region alone, the Miller Junior Well pad project destroyed bridges, increased policing needs, road upgrades and expansions, as well as creating litigation costs for the township when the company didn't follow through on their promises. I encourage all of you to consider increased setbacks for our oil and gas ordinance. Increases from homes from just 500 to 750 feet represents a 50% increase in the distance to this industrial process. It is worth it. I would also encourage you to consider protecting sensitive populations like schools, daycare centers, assisted living facilities, whatever way you want to define them. Because the reality is, the closer you are to fracking, the more chance you have of health impacts. And those includes respiratory diseases, heart disease, and cancer. I hope you all consider these facts. The community supports protections as seen in the large attendance during the recent fracking rezoning issue. Oil and gas companies in PA have agreed to larger setbacks on their own. And Indiana Township has experienced the shortcomings of oil and gas companies and the damage that they can cause.
Thank you.
And I do have, I'm going to give you guys copies of the statement of interest with CNX and information about, information about the, the health impacts of fracking. My son helped do it, so it's my grandson, but thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dennis Hackett, 113 Black Oak Drive. You're my neighbor. And I'm new to this process. And the first thing I would like to ask for clarity is there was a lot of discussion last month on the Emerald Park. You know, you voted on on that with Andrea. Can somebody refresh or clarify what benefit there was to the township for us to approve that zoning change? And what was the benefit to township and the citizen? Can somebody help me there?
As you may know, we deny it.
I know that. Yes, I'm thinking.
No, we deny it. And they never, the planning commission asked for some economic study from MPF and they never presented.
But we, you folks, spent a lot of time and effort on that, didn't we, not? Okay, so, I'm new to the process, you know, but why do we, why do we do that? I mean, if we said there's no benefit, why do we spend any time doing it?
Sir, the process is the process. So, people have a right to ask. You know, proprietors have a right to make a request of the board to consider whatever zoning changes they want. The board doesn't know in advance or can't talk offline secretly to discuss whether they like it or not. So, you have to go through the process. It goes to the planning commission, the public's involved, everybody hears about it. The planning commission, of course, in this case, made a negative recommendation. You know, asking that we don't need, you know, not to approve it. The first step in that process for the Board of Supervisors is to schedule a public hearing. That was, what happened last meeting was not even the public hearing. It was just a discussion on whether or not there should be a public hearing. So, the board listened to the applicant, listened to the number of people that came to speak about it, you know, and then decided, "We don't need to have a public hearing." So, that's where it ended. There was not a public hearing scheduled. Had they scheduled a public hearing, and there would be one, say, next month, that you, you know, I guess you could be there saying, "Well, why are you scheduling a public hearing?" That would be a question. The board voted not to schedule a public hearing. But that's up to you.
Okay. It just sounds very strange to me that we had 150, 200 people, very emotional, okay, spent what, an hour and a half, okay, talking about all the negatives of this. And then when I heard prior, a couple of weeks prior, it was going to be a closed vote. And I'm going, "I don't understand this." Let's park that, okay? Let's just, let's park that a second. But it just makes, makes me wonder is to, you know, how, how, how the system works. And now we're also talking about, with Melissa was, Vanessa was saying about increasing the setbacks or whatever. I don't get the feeling that you guys are with us. I just don't get the feeling, okay, that you guys are saying, "I understand," you know, "and you look at our position where you look at all the negatives of this, and the three of us are looking at this going in across the creek." I don't see you excited to say, "Yeah, you, let's support it, let's get this done." Okay, "The community is asking us to do it." I don't see it. Am I missing something?
Well, we're trying to land on a number. Because what we kind of discussed last week with these different incremental changes, it's a long process. Like, I think Paul maybe outlined it, three or four months. So, if we're going to go down that route, we need to know where we're going and what we're going to be going along with. So, that's why we were kind of talking. And, you know, there's a solicitor sitting here for a reason. Big issue is litigation risk. So, sometimes it's not so much an issue of, "We want this to happen, but we need to do our homework to make sure there's not negative consequences" by companies, developers who have legal rights to process. And we need to make sure that we hear them out properly or craft our statutes properly to basically cover the interests of the township financially and legally. So, I didn't think they had, like, to stand on when it came to economic benefit. That's why I sided with the planning commission to deny. But they still get to go through that process because that's their right as property owners or prospective developer.
Does the board believe it makes sense for us to try to increase the setback?
I'm interested.
Yeah, I'm very interested in that.
I hear you two all the time. I don't hear anybody else saying yes.
Well, because the board is supposed to vote based on what is said and what is presented at the public hearing. To, in my way of thinking, to announce how I'm going to vote or before I see all the information.
Okay, then let me just, does it make sense to you vote? That this should, or are we wasting our time?
We're not wasting our time.
Okay, thank you.
I think it makes sense to hear people who are very well-versed in this arena and who, you know, have dedicated a lot of time or careers to hear about what is possible, probable, helpful, that we can not get ourselves in litigation and do the best we can to also protect our constituents. So, I'm very, I'm very interested in continuing to hear more information.
So, we, we, especially them and Andreas who couldn't make it tonight, we are not wasting our time, correct?
I would suggest, I know your time is up, but I would suggest that if you look, the minutes that were approved tonight from last month's meeting will be posted on the website tomorrow. And it was a very good explanation of the township's position from the solicitor in those minutes. Feel free to read it. I think that'll provide you some answers.
Okay, okay. And then just one last thing, in that area, so don't get a big discussion. But had, last week, when the conflict of interest came up, okay, Darren, if you had just said, okay, what you did say is, "I'm not discussing this anymore." If you had just said what Mr. Jorgensen had said, all would have been fine, but all of us in the audience, it's not what we heard.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any further comments?
Nadia Owens, 113 Black Oak Drive. So, I wanted to just come back around to some items that have been on the discussion in previous meetings that we haven't talked about in a while. One was already brought up, which was the comprehensive plan. So, I'm glad to hear that that's moving along. The other was the process on digitizing the ordinances. So, I was just curious where that is in the process.
Our finance director and myself are answering about 450 questions currently on, on that change, the changes that, not really change, it's just the new digital draft, which incorporated all the ordinances which were digitized from 1984 through today.
So, will that be available before the end of the year, do you think?
Well, I'm hopeful that it'll be to the board, at least for consideration, before the end of the year. I don't know how long it'll take thereafter. But right now, we're in that process. I don't expect to have it to be before November, maybe December, the other days.
And, and that will be accessible to the citizens once it's done? Once it's approved and done?
Not with the initial draft until that's prepared for adoption, then that'll be made up.
Okay, great. Thank you on that update.
Authorized to be advertised.
Perfect. It's been asked in several meetings that instead of people saying their names and addresses, that we have just a sign-in sheet when people come up. That can be added to the record, just for personal safety. I haven't seen any discussion or movement on that. So, I'd like to know what the process is to, to make that logistical administrative change. Other, you know, other townships do it that way? The Board of Education does it that way?
I'm not sure what the process would be to start that. Is that something that's in an ordinance?
No, I mean, I have to check how people, it's, you know, it's, you're certainly allowed to make that not part of the, they can say their name, identify themselves as a township resident, and that's, that's not the, you know, you're legally allowed to eliminate that restriction at their option. Sometimes it's helpful to understand where people are relative to what they're talking about. For that reason, you're allowed to.
Or make it optional? You could always provide a sign-in sheet. That way, they'd have that option of putting it down if they want to say it. But ultimately, it's going to end up in the.
Well, no, you can, you don't, you don't have to.
Okay.
That, there's, you know, legally not required. You have that sort of change, you know, so. It's up to the board if you want to drop that, make that required optional, it's up to you.
I think it would be protective of our citizens who are coming up here.
We just said, we verify they are residents.
Yeah, if we could just say, yes.
Because we do often have non-residents come here.
Well, and to clarify that, I mean, to say, "I'm a resident," or, you know, would be, what Herb is saying is, that would be sufficient.
Yeah, of course, if it turned out they weren't, you know, the next time they would probably do it.
Right.
Right.
Again, it is not in other, in other places, and it's not really going to do that.
Okay, so for the sake of someone who felt they wanted to not share publicly their address, we could just offer a sign-in sheet?
Would, you just, you just say that you don't, if someone said, "I don't want to give my address," instead of giving, "You're a township resident, yes, please proceed." You have a right to do that.
And we'll verify. Is that something we need to vote on?
I have to check.
Just, personally.
I don't remember how, I don't remember how that was thought.
I think it's an arsenal.
It might be.
It might be ours.
It might be, we have to.
Let us know. I think it is. Let us know how conservative.
That is an art administrative case for running a meeting.
You probably need a motion to.
How kind of.
Well, first of all, I'd like to comment on that. You're asking to do a sign-in sheet where you sign that your address, right?
I'm just asking that we not say it out loud, so whatever the process is.
Okay, fine. If you sign a sheet with your name and your address, the public's going to know it anyway.
Well, and we can be able to verify.
It's attached, it's an attachment to the minutes, it's part of the meeting.
But we could not have the address be in the minutes is what we're.
We could.
Yeah, so we could just remove the minutes from, or the address from the minutes as well. Okay, well then, I'll make the motion then to have a discussion.
Well, I think Herb needs to look into what.
Oh, okay. I thought he said that it was not part of.
It technically needs to happen with the township code.
I can report back.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Herb. But just, it has been asked multiple times and it hadn't been spoken to. So, I appreciate you talking about it now. Well, there was this conversation that went on about it, so I'm going to keep going. I would like to know why the.
People were talking during her time.
I was keeping track of it. We'll give you another edit.
So, question about why the supervisors are allowed to call in to these meetings but the citizens cannot. Thankfully, Mr. Slagle has yet again been very efficient and has found over, I think, $10,000 in under-budget projects, which we're so thankful for, which will definitely cover the cost of live streaming. I'm sure it would more than cover the cost of live streaming. If you'll recall, back at the beginning of the year, 90% of the residents polled definitely wanted that. It would improve transparency, accessibility to information, as well as make it available for people with disabilities and other constraints to be able to come and participate in their government. 8% said that they wanted to consider it. 2% said they did not want it. I feel like you have an obligation to the citizens that you have been sworn to uphold to do what is asked by these citizens and also to provide this accessibility for people with disabilities. So, since funding is not an issue and it is highly favored by the township's citizens, I'm going to ask you again that you please provide this access that you continue to deny.
Ms. Oh, your time's run. And you ask for this every meeting and take up 10 minutes of our time.
I can't stand here for 10 minutes. I was, that was one minute you told me you gave me back, which I.
You keep asking for this. If you would just say, "I again ask for a live streaming," and don't say the same thing you've said four or five months in a row, because it's just taking time and these good people have places to go.
I'm not going to stop. I'm not. I'm going to be the voice for the people. For the five people who are in here, the 20 people who are in the room, there's another five people. That's 20% of the audience is coming in by live stream. This should be accessible for people. I will keep speaking.
Thanks for your comments. Any other comments?
I just have a question. I'll back up now on 10 Darren Lane. It's a question for Mr. Anderson. I just was curious, this is truly for my, thank you, truly for my information. Can you speak to at all the criteria that you use for recommending an appointment to the planning commission?
I don't, this, this is a comment period. It's not, it's for you to address the board.
Is it published anywhere? Or if I email you, can you verify?
The criteria for the planning commission.
Yeah, like, what do you, it's like a job description. Is there, is there something that says, here's?
Wouldn't be a job description, but I can give you the, the ordinance that was cited that creates the planning commission. You can find that in our codified ordinances, which are on our website.
And that will explain, if you want to serve on the planning commission, here's the, here's generally what we need. Here's the role of it, here's the.
Planning commission's, the hearing board, the authorities, that's all covered.
So, that, and that's what you used to reference to make recommendations?
Yes. You can read those in there regarding the Board of Supervisors and the establishment of the board.
I need a statement I need. Brian Merritt, 5 Tulsa Village. I just wanted to say, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize that today is September 11th. It might seem like any other day. But it is not, and we have some first responders here. So, I just wanted to thank them for the service.
Thank you. Anything further?
I make the motion to adjourn to executive action, executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Hairquake, to adjourn to executive session. Thank you all for attending this evening.